Mary.
I would like to fill the meeting's order for the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2023-06 for March 21, 2023. For those who would like to join us in the Lord's Prayer and Prejudice, please do so.
Our Father.
Wherever He be.
Have He seen Thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trust us against us. And lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy is the kingdom, the power, and glory forever. Amen.
To the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. And to the Republic, which is stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The consent agenda passes. Next, we have a proclamation declaring the month of March as March for Meals Month. Ms. Paula Erdy with MAC Incorporated, Area Agency on Aging, is here, and the proclamation is being presented by Councilman Jeff Merritt, District 2, Representative.
Good morning. Come on up, don't be bashful. Morning, everyone. This is a proclamation for March for Meals Month, whereas Meals on Wheels America established March for Meals in March 2002 to recognize the importance of the Older Americans Act nutrition programs and raise awareness about the problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in Wycomico County are the backbone of the program, they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also deliver caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas MAC Incorporated Meals on Wheels Program provided 76,197 meals to seniors in Wycomico County in 2022, which was a 14.8% increase from 2021. And whereas MAC Incorporated Meals on Wheels Program provides an opportunity for social connection for hundreds of seniors to help combat negative health effects and economic consequences of food insecurity, loneliness, and isolation. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the County Executive hereby proclaim March 2023 as March for Meals Month and urge every citizen to honor and support MAC Incorporated Meals on Wheels programs and the seniors they serve done this 21st day of March 2023. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
You get it? Get one for the county here. Um, I have to ask that you return this with one more signature for somebody here. Thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
I'll just say a few words. I just wanted to say, thank you. Thank you so much for your support. It is a vital, vital service that MAC provides for our seniors, and particularly now, but also pre, you know, when we had COVID, that was really running rampant. So I obviously knew the numbers, and we continue to do that work, and I think that everybody is so happy that you support us, and we so appreciate it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize the 100th anniversary celebration of the meat chicken industry. Ms. Holly Porter, Executive Director of the Delmarva Chicken Industry, is here, and the proclamation is being presented by Councilman Joe Holloway, District 5, Representative.
Good morning. Before I read this proclamation, I just wanted to say and reflect on how important poultry industry is to Wycomico County and to the eastern shore and state of Maryland, state of Delaware, of course, the state of Virginia in some aspects. If you go over here to the hospital and walk the halls, you'll see there's a lot of donations done from people that own some of the poultry companies. If you go to the college, there's buildings built there that the poultry industry funded in building, you know, through the owners of some of these companies. A lot of families in Wycomico County depend on the poultry industry, hundreds if not thousands of people in Wycomico County in some aspects depend on the poultry industry. So it's very important to us. So anyway. Whereas in 1923, an accidental shipment of 500 chickens to Cecilia Steele of Sussex County, Delaware led to the first Borler Chicken Farm on Delmarva, which jump-started an American innovation, a farm dedicated to raising chickens, not for eggs in particular, but to eat. Whereas since then, the industry has made remarkable advances, given generations of family farmers a way to make a living, serving as a backbone of Delmarva's economy and protecting the environment by utilizing fewer resources to produce more chickens. And whereas today, there are more than 1,300 farmers on Delmarva, more than 18,000 chicken industry employees, and hundreds of allied businesses in the chicken community working together to produce $4.5 billion worth of chickens a year. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the County Executive hereby join the Delmarva Chicken Association in celebrating 100 years of innovation in the growth of the meat chicken industry on Delmarva. And this is signed by the County Executive and the County Council. And thank you. Would you like to say something, Holly?
So good morning. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and appreciate the opportunity to celebrate 100 years of the meat chicken industry that got its start right here on Delmarva. I handed out some flyers to you that we've put together. So the Delmarva Chicken Association, the trade association for the industry, is taking this year to celebrate. It happens to also be our 75th anniversary as an association. And we're taking this year to celebrate and to really help put together sort of an educational and public relations campaign for folks throughout Delmarva, throughout other areas, who really appreciate having chicken on their plate but may not recognize how it gets there. And so our focus is really on the growers. You heard, we have over 1,300 growers here on Delmarva. These are family farmers. These are people that are raising their families as well as raising chicken. It's the economics and the jobs. There's more than 18,000 employees directly tied to the chicken companies, many of them working right here in Salisbury and throughout Wycomico County, that again, these are people whose livelihoods are around that. And then there's the environmental aspects and all that we've grown from that. And of course, our exciting thing that we just announced last Monday, that is the capstone of our event, is we are bringing the Delmarva Chicken Festival back for one year only. I have to emphasize that, hopefully. And we're very, very excited to be doing that. We felt like there was no better way to celebrate this 100 than to do that. How many, how many folks have participated in the Chicken Festival over the years? Exactly, a lot of people and a lot of fond memories. So we are so excited to be partnering with Purdue Stadium. That's where the location will be on Saturday, October 7, 2023. We are also partnering with the Greater Salisbury Committee, with the Chamber, the Salisbury Chamber of Commerce, with Wycomico County Farm Bureau, and so many others in bringing back this event. From 1:00 to 7:00 p.m., there will be live music, there will be food trucks. If you go away hungry, then I have no, no words for you. There will be a lot of food. I will share the one thing that we are not bringing back, for those who have attended in the past, is the giant chicken pan. The frying pan is in a museum currently, and literally, we'd have to take the roof off in order to be able to get this out. However, we are partnering with the Salisbury Lions Club that have a smaller version of this frying pan that we're excited to bring back. And there's going to be lots of other fun things, chicken pickin', wing eating contests, capers, kids' activities. So we're really, really excited about this, very excited to be bringing it here to Wycomico County. Look forward to working with everyone and seeing everyone on October 7. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize the month of March as National Nutrition Month. Ms. Karen Rederson, Area Extension Director with the University of Maryland Extension, is here, and the proclamation is being presented by Councilman James Nguyen, at-large Representative.
Yes, so we have a proclamation, Nutrition, National Nutrition Month. Whereas National Nutrition Month is an annual campaign created by the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics to focus on the importance of making informed choices and developing sound eating and physical activity habitat, habits. And whereas National Nutrition Month promotes the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics and its members to the public as the most valuable, incredible source of timely, scientifically-based food and nutrition information. And whereas the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics mission is to promote optimal nutrition and wellbeing for all people by advocating for its members and its, and is the largest organization of food and nutrition, nutrition professionals. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the County Executive hereby proclaim March 2023 as National Nutrition Month in Wycomico County.
Good morning, everyone. University of Maryland Extension educators touch many parts of the community here in Wycomico County. Agriculture education is our backbone, 4-H youth development, nutrition education, financial literacy, master gardeners. We touched the, the community in many ways, and we couldn't do it without your continued support. So we're very much appreciative of your support and for the honor of this proclamation. One of our nutrition educators, Limitava, is going to share a few things about our nutrition impacts and outreach out here in the county.
Thank you. So we've had a Maryland SNAP Ed program here in this county since 2015, and it's become a pretty big project. I just pulled some numbers up as we were sitting here. We're currently in 74 classrooms in the county. That's one of our initiatives, is working with children in the schools for healthy school communities. We also work with securing food resources and farm to family, and a lot of times, we work with all of that combined, because really, any kind of really successful programming involves everyone in the community getting together and all of these things working, these components working, you know, as one. So we, over the course of the last few years, have worked in a total of 1,574 classrooms, and I'm really proud of that. But to give you some, some less quantitative data, just to share a story, we had at a local school, Prince Street Elementary, they have a grant from the Maryland Food Bank, and they were receiving, they receive food that they then distribute to families. And we can distribute healthy food to families, but if they're not eating it, if they don't know what to do with it, how do we know that we're actually, you know, assisting families the way that we really can be? So we had a program where they just happened to order a whole bunch of extra salmon. They had the canned salmon. And so we went in and we set up some hot plates and were making salmon cakes for families to try right there and just show them how to use different ingredients to make a really affordable and nutritious meal. And that's just one example of the kinds of things that we can go in and do, because then we're also, we're, you know, utilizing our food resources, we're teaching families how to make that food. We're not just reaching the students, which is, by the way, one of the favorite parts of my job, because we do get children really excited about tasting new foods, increasing their, their like palates and being more willing to try fruits and vegetables. In fact, 82% of the students that have our programming, they report back saying that they've asked their family to purchase healthy foods and fruits and vegetables over the last few years, which is really a, a great thing. But we couldn't do it with everyone in the community, all the teachers that have been trained to deliver their, our programming, so that I'm not in 74 classrooms personally every month. I might go into some, and then the teachers on the opposite months are teaching. We have our wonderful program assistant, Tracy Lito, that does all kinds of grocery shopping and buying lots of things to deliver all over the, with curricula and books and things to the teachers. And so I'm just going to leave you with a really cute little story. We teach the children not to yuck anybody's yum and that they want to try things, and even if they don't like it, it's okay, but we don't want them saying, "Yuck, ew nasty", because, you know, it's really not a good feel-good environment. And we went into a classroom setup, we're waiting for the lesson to start. They were all learning about what spiders eat, and they learned how the spiders kill their prey and then remove the, the liquids from the spider. And one little boy in the class said, "Yuck," and a little girl stood up and said, "Don't you yuck that spider's yum." And I was like, "Our programming really is impacting people," so thank you very much.
Good morning, Ms. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. Vice President, Councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is Resolution Number 45-2023. This is to authorize the expansion of the city of Salisbury Sustainable Community Area Boundary to include 510 West Road, Salisbury, Maryland. And we have Mr. Jesse Drewer, Community Development Planner. He is here if there are any questions.
Good morning.
Good morning. So what we have in front of us today is a request for resolution to support the city of Salisbury adding the property 510 West Road into their sustainable community area boundary. The property currently is in Wycomico County and through the process of this grant and over time, the intention is to be annexed into the city of Salisbury.
So from my understanding, to get the grant, they have to be part of the city?
Right now, the Wycomico County does not have any recognized sustainable community area boundaries, only the city of Salisbury does. And as a requirement for, as a requirement for this grant, the property has to be located inside this boundary. And I gave Ms. Hurley a map, and I think on the last page, you can see it quite literally stops right on the property line of this, of this property right here. And this is a requirement to take advantage of the $500,000 Wycomico County has already been awarded for the strategic demolition and revitalization of the property.
I just wanted to say, I'm happy as a lark.
I was getting ready to ask you what you thought.
The Camel, the Camel Soup Building, it's been vacant, and the peel and paint has always been a concern. And we had a new apartment complex across the street, and the property manager would always ask when I was on the city council, "What are they going to do with this building? They need to paint it, they need to strip it, and it's very expensive." But by it not being in this city, we nearly couldn't do anything, is like find them or get on them about it. So I'm happy that they're looking at annexing that to the, the city.
I can't speak to the full details of that, but I know the developer, Mr. Davis, that is the long-term intentions of the plan over as it's working through the process.
Other comments?
Just a brief, it's kind of amazing that it wasn't in the city in the first place, and everyone thinking, when you grew up here and knew, knows where that's at, and you think it would be. But obviously, I'm sure that was done for profit reasons. But good that it's returning, or it should be where it should be in the city. And happy to support.
So I'm asking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 45-2023.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
With no further discussion, all those in favor of Resolution Number 45-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution Number 45-2023 passes.
Thank you.
Thanks for your consideration. This is Resolution Number 46-2023. This is amending the fiscal year 2023 Position Control Document identified as Exhibit F to increase the salary for position number 100302, job class number 249, to $31,658 per year. And we have Mr. Michael Jamison here, Deputy Director of Operations for Wycomico County Detention Center.
Mr. Jamison, you'd like to come up?
Morning.
Morning. Would you like to give us a brief overview?
We had one of our employees take a slight promotion from a, from the position that's described there to, on a position in our finance department. With that, there's a increase in salary, which I believe has to be authorized by council.
Comments, any concerns? So I ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 46-2023.
Salute.
And a second?
Second.
Any further comments? All those in favor of Resolution Number 46-2023, say aye.
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 Any opposed? I vote aye, too. Motion is carried. Resolution Number 46-2023 passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 47-2023. This is regarding the settlement of a lawsuit against Teva Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. And we have Mr. Paul Wilbur, County Attorney, is here if there are any questions.
Morning. So this is, as we discussed in a work session, this is the continuing settlement of opioid cases.
Yeah. Well. I feel like we've already had lots of discussion or discussion.
I think we've worked it through in the work session.
Asking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 47-2023. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor of Resolution Number 47-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution Number 47-2023 passes. Chair votes aye as well.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item for business, Resolution Number 48-2023. This is approving a zoning classification of light business and institutional upon annexation by the city of Salisbury, a property located on Sharon Drive, known as 2538 Old Ocean City Road, tax map 39, grid seven, parcel 269, lots one and two. And before you, you have Mr. Mark Tillman, Attorney for the applicant.
And Mr. LB Steele, who is representing the applicant. First of all, I just noticed in the resolution that it was approving classification of light business and institutional. That apparently was taken from an earlier version of this. The, the actual city zoning, or the planned zoning is Plan Development District Number One, Robertson Farm, PDD Number One. Both of those classifications would allow the use that's proposed. There's no difference really, other than the fact that ultimately, the city chose to go with PDD Number One instead of the light business. And I wasn't, I mean, my request asked for the PDD Number One, and I wasn't aware until I came in here this morning that the wrong classification was on this proposed resolution. So I guess we should amend that, because that's not the request.
Can we amend that, Ms. Hurley?
You can. You would need a first and a second to amend the resolution.
So. So what exactly, I'm just trying to figure out where, what exactly are we amending?
Just the, the city, in other words, the, the county is consenting to the city classification, PDD Number One, which the city has approved the proposed project as is. There was an earlier version where the city was proposing that they use the, the light business classification, but the project is going to remain the same. There's no difference in what is planned to be built. But ultimately, the city thought it was easier, because instead of changing the zoning, all they had to do was amend the code to include this area within that zoning district, which is what was ultimately done.
If I can get a motion to amend as described by the attorney.
So moved.
Do we have to introduce it first?
Yes, you do have to introduce the resolution first.
I'll make a motion to introduce.
Resolution 48-2023.
23, yeah.
And now we need a second, right?
Got one.
And now you need a motion to amend?
Yeah, we need a motion to amend this.
I make a motion to amend the corrections.
And a second?
Second.
Okay.
Now we move forward, right?
Yes.
Okay. technicalities.
Sorry, I just, I had, I didn't realize that the old version was on here until I came in this morning.
Now it's important we get it right.
Yeah.
So any other discussion? So asking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 48-2023?
I just have a couple of questions real quick. So what are you going to be using this parcel for?
Excuse me, good morning. We're going to be developing a self-storage facility.
Okay, and that's consistent with the zoning in the general area?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a residential right now?
Excuse me, it's consistent with everything to the west side of this piece of property. To the east side is county property. So this was on a, this was on a, I'm not going to say this right, an in-between piece, where the, it was in county property, and everything to the west was city, everything to the east was county. We brought it into, we annexed it into the city so that we could develop it for this use.
Okay.
If I'm saying that right.
And the PDD Number One is, is basically a mixed use of, you know, if you, if you ride out that way, it's easy to see what's going on there. There's a number of different uses, primarily that there's more dense residential uses, and then this use is, you know, considered to be, you know, self-storage garage-type uses for the, the more dense residential area next door.
That stands for Plan Development District Number One.
Correct.
Any other questions? Asking for a motion to approve Resolution Number 48-2023, and a second?
As amended.
As amended. And a second? All those in favor of Resolution Number 48-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Resolution Number 48-2023 passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, that's all I have.
Thank you.
And this is the introduction of Legislative Bill 2023-02, an act to amend Chapter 225 of the Wycomico County Code titled Zoning, Part Eight titled Special, stands for particular uses, Article Roman numeral XX or 1010, titled Accessory and Principal Uses, Article 18 titled Principal Uses, Sections 225-67, titled Table, Permitted Uses, Designations, and Chapter 174 of the Wycomico County Code titled Nuisances, Article One titled Nuisances, Abandoned Vehicles and Firearms, Section 174.1 titled Nuisances enumerated to regulate the, to regulate the installation, construction, location, and size of a solar energy system in Wycomico County.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Asking for a motion to introduce Legislative Bill Number 2023-03.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, this is exactly what we were talking about the last work session, correct?
Right.
Right, right. That's what I thought.
That solar panels.
And I'll just say that the Department did add the language that the Council President requested into the legislation.
Requested what, what into the legislation?
To my recollection, Mr. Mitchell, and you can help me out if I'm off topic here, but the men, the suggested that he add it was to make sure that there was a county representative that would attend the Public Service Commission meetings, so that language was added.
They, they were asking that they be permitted, and I think President Cannon wanted them to be required to be there. Is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, they typically, I think, give testimony at those hearings in a way, but he asked that it be included in the legislation, so that has been included.
Question?
I just had clarity, I guess, on the, I was listening to the last meeting and just trying to get an understanding, anything over 2 megawatts depended upon whether that 2 megawatt difference changes. You know, obviously, anything over that has to go to CP, get CP CN, Certificate of Public Need and Consent, or Certificate of Public Need and, was it, and necessi, anyway, convenience and essentia, that's what it is. I guess, I didn't understand from the last conversation, we are looking to regulate things below. I didn't understand from the last conversation, we are looking to regulate things below two megawatts? Are we, from the standpoint of setbacks and other kind of the, the random pieces that they have in here, the, the, the things that we've put in here for anything above two megawatts, can we still dictate that regardless of who approves the final project, or if the project is worthy, can we still, you know, affect things like we have in here from the, the vegetative ground cover, those kind of, the, the pieces that go along with that? Because I guess what I'm getting at is I'd like to still make sure that we are, that the parameters that we are trying to put in place as far as aesthetics, as, as far as, you know, the, the pieces that we mentioned at the last meeting, that that also still continues for anything over two megawatts, while realizing that whether or not, you know, the, the project is approved may be out of our hands to some degree. I don't know if anyone can answer that, I guess.
Service Commission controls, they're the final answer on anything over two megawatts, but I think they will look at what Wacomco County has in place and try to incorporate a lot of it. But we don't control the process at the end.
That, that's the final approval, though. Do we control the parameters that go around it, say, like setbacks or things like that for two megawatts?
I think they will look at what we have in our code for guidance. The Public Service Commission will, but they do not have to follow it.
I think so, yeah, I mean.
That's, that's the most accurate answer I think we can give. The experience has been with these large projects with the county, the consultant has consistently recommended what our suggestions are moving forward in that CP CN application process, and the final design has reflected anything that we've asked for in the process.
The only one, one thing I wanted to add on top of that is, you know, just to, just so it said, and I think it was kind of left out of the last conversation, the, you know, the reason why we wanted to move forward with Wacomco County going through a process to zone for, or to, to kind of control for renewable energy, in this case, solar, the other counties that have done so, that's those, you know, what they've put together has then gone into the, the process, I think, for understanding what is or is not acceptable. So the, the, about five, six years ago, whatever it was, the, the Kent County actually moved forward. They were one of the first counties in the state to actually do renewable energy siting, and in doing so, and the, you know, they had a big wind farm that was actually going to happen in Kent County. That then shifted to then become the Bay Solar Project, large one. But the end of the day, it got kind of rejected and pushed out. I forget the whole, what happened with it, but basically, what we took out of that was that because the county, the local body, took the time to say this is what they want for their area, that was then taken into account. So a couple of the, I don't know how many now to date, but a couple of these large, over-two-megawatt product, projects have either been stopped or, you know, the courts have taken that into, into account. So I like the fact that we are going through this process, and, you know, the neighboring counties, like Caroline County, they've put a, they put a, I think it was a two-thousand-acre limit to how much they, they want to develop. They want to make sure that their agricultural land was protected. They hit it like that, almost immediately with two projects. So we didn't, we don't currently have that within here, but I, I like at least where we've, you know, as far as where we've gone so far. We don't, we don't, we, I don't think we're going too far, but if we wanted to go in that kind of direction, I'm sure we probably could. Other counties have done so, but, yeah.
Right, legislation can always be amended.
No more.
All right. Any other comments or concerns? All right. Thank you. All those in favor of introducing Legislative Bill twenty-two-three dash zero-three say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. The introduction of Legislative Bill twenty-two-three dash zero-three passes. Mrs. Hurley, what's the next step for this legislation?
So this legislation will now come back as a public hearing, and we can have that on April the eighteenth at ten a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor to public comments. If you have any comments you would like to share, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing no pub, public comments, that concludes our public comments.
Paul, you don't have anything you want to say?
That's all I need to say.
Are there any council comments?
I just wanted to say I'm glad I'm back.
Yes.
We're glad you're back, too.
Where I can see people's faces.
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just happy to be back.
I.
And get some work done. And I, but I'm taking one day at a time. I'm trying to follow my doctor's orders.
We're glad you're both back.
Yeah, oh yeah, Josh, me and you.
You've been gone just as long, if not, you've been gone longer, right?
Yeah, but I'm just glad to be back. Like, I like to look at people's faces, the body language, and, and I got to be careful what I say, because I forget to mute my button.
I, 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 I was realizing that we don't, I don't know if we have a red cross around here. I think the.
On Hammerson Avenue.
We have like a, an actual red cross here?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I mean, I didn't know. Now I know.
Where you been?
Oh, yeah. Never mind.
That's why I'm back.
That's why you're back. Never mind.
I'll jump in if there's. I was just going to say that, yeah, it is good to be back, and I'm glad to be able to see everybody again. Thanks to everyone who reached out and all the nice comments folks had when I was in the hospital. I am on a full track for recovery and should be in good shape. This past weekend was my first weekend actually being able to be out and about, and so it was good to be able to, to multiple council members here. I know we're at the, including Joe and Jeff and others, at the ninetieth annual Wacomco County Farm Bureau banquet. That was actually great to be, to be out there and see so many folks I grew up with. So that was great, and I also, I did want to recognize, you know, Holly Porter, it's good to be able to see the, the chicken festival coming back. You know, as a farm kid, I spent a whole lot of time going year after year to that, and I loved being able to get chicken from the world's largest frying pan. I still would love to do that again, but I'm glad to be able to see it come back and to be here in Wacomco County. So I'll leave it at that.
One thing else I wanted to say is I believe the sanitation district has passed through the House, so that's, that's good. And then the Sunday hunting bill has passed through the House with, with the ten-thirty restriction on all new Sundays, not, not, not the existing Sundays. So the existing Sundays that have full days, we're going to continue to have those full days, but all the other Sundays are going to be, well, it's passed through the House, it's still got to go through the Senate, but they're, they're going to allow hunting on a Sunday till ten-thirty.
Ten-thirty, man?
Ten-thirty, like, in the morning?
Oh.
You can't hunt at night.
Well, I don't know anything about hunting, so.
Yeah, not yet, at least.
That's good news.
Yeah, I mean, they're both good news, yeah. I'm, I'm not too sure what's happened with the, the, the bull lips situation, so I don't know, I have to ask.
Well, seeing there's no other comments, ask for a motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions.
So moved.
And if I can get a second?
Second.
All those in favor, and any, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Now going into the open work session. The first open work session is the Delmarva Shorebirds update by Mr. Chris Bitters, General Manager of the Delmarva Shorebirds.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Thank you.
How are you?
Good, good. It's an exciting time of year. If you don't mind, I'll pass some of these around. They're a little bit dated, but these are some of our annual reports from prior years. There are two different years in here, but I thought for new council members, they may not be familiar with the.
Thank you.
Shorebirds, that these might be some visual aids to some of the things that I'll talk about. Sorry, I know I'm not in front of the mic yet.
All right.
Two thousand and eighteen.
Thanks, Steve.
Now, there, there might be an autograph in one of those. Well, good morning. For those of you that know me or don't know me, my name's Chris Bitters. I'm the General Manager of the Delmarva Shorebirds, and I've been the General Manager for the last sixteen, maybe seventeen years, since the fall of two thousand and six, when we took over the Shorebirds. This will be, believe it or not, our twenty-eighth season in, at Purdue Stadium. We started in nineteen ninety-six as a Montreal Expo affiliate and have been a Baltimore Orioles affiliate since the nineteen ninety-seven season. So our role as the Shorebirds, we kind of, and I'll give some background here, we really have two people that we service, I guess you would say. The player development process with the Baltimore Orioles and helping young athletes get to the major leagues, hopefully with the Orioles, and then also, obviously, the fans and our community. So my role as General Manager is always kind of one foot in each bucket, and whereas my staff focus is primarily on the community and, and engagement side of things. And it's an exciting time to be a part of the Shorebirds family and the Orioles family. As you may know, the Orioles have been going through a rebuilding mode for the last handful of years, and it's been very successful for them. We've seen all the number-one draft picks come through Salisbury over recent years. If you're paying attention to the major leagues, and I don't know how much, how many baseball fans we have on council, but players like Adley Rutchman, who was just here a year or two ago, Gunnar Henderson was here a year ago, and they're both in the major leagues. Felix Batista was part of our twenty-twenty-one team and pitched the entire season in twenty-twenty-two in Baltimore. Michael Givens, who's now back with the Orioles, started with the Shorebirds, spent three seasons with us. Other players like D.L. Hall, Grayson Rodriguez, John Means, Nick Vesby, Ryan McKenna, Mullins. I looked at the forty-man roster this morning, and about half of the players on the Major League forty-man roster all played right here in Salisbury. That doesn't include guys that are no longer with the Orioles, big names like Manny Machado and others. And on top of that, what people also forget sometimes when you come to the ballpark and some of the players you may see on opposing teams, is, you know, we've had players like Bryce Harper play against us, and, you know, those type of, type of names are playing against us on a regular basis. So, you know, so that's, that's what we do on the player development side, so we have those needs that we have to focus on in terms of the player development, player health and wellness, travel, all those things, and then obviously on the fan and community side. The community, as you see in the recap report, and again, those are dated, we haven't made a new one since COVID, but we will be working on one this year that will recap the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three seasons. Community is pretty much everything that we focus on on a daily basis. Our youth programs, we're right now in the middle of it, our Hit the Books reading program that we've done for, for years and years and years, reaches about a hundred schools on the peninsula. Those are elementary and middle schools, and that reaches fifty thousand students, encouraging them to read books outside the classroom, and they get rewarded to come to their school tonight at the Shorebirds with two free tickets. That's in the process now. Those tickets are going out. We work on that program all, all winter. Our summer library reading program, we work with just about every library on the peninsula to encourage kids to go to libraries, check out books and read. We have a kids' club, excellent deal. For thirty bucks, you can get two tickets to seven games, so fourteen tickets for thirty bucks. I'm not great at math, but it's probably about two and a quarter a ticket. We obviously work with our Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, our Little Leagues, and then we have three school field trip days. It's great to be back to our regular community programming. As you may remember, twenty, in September of twenty nineteen, our season ended. Shortly thereafter, we were wiped out. As a large venue in the state of Maryland and in this country, we were completely shut down, could have zero economic activity at the ballpark. Later that summer, we were actually able to host some youth baseball out on the field, but no real activity from a business standpoint. And that continued through May of twenty-twenty-one. So we basically went, from a pandemic standpoint, September of nineteen to May of twenty-twenty-one, almost eighteen months, with basically zero business activity. Twenty-twenty-one season, we rebounded, we were able to open back up, but that was under severe restrictions. I had to zip tie every seat, we had to sit six feet apart, we had to do all this crazy stuff to try to operate. Thankfully, later on this season, we were able to get back to what we do. So twenty-twenty-two was really our first year with very few COVID restrictions, more restrictions on the players than we did on the fans. But again, the community is what we strive to be engaged with and support those that are here in our, our markets. Our senior program, our Silver Sluggers program, if some people are familiar with that, it has over twelve-hundred members that are able to come out to Wednesday games, usually eleven Wednesday games per season, and I think it's about forty bucks a package. So again, do the math, it's under four dollars a ticket for seniors in our community, and obviously, a lot of those folks are on fixed income. And you've heard me say the word "community," but again, I think we try to put our, our, put ourselves in that position. You know, July fourth, we work with Operation We Care, and over the years, gosh, I couldn't tell you how much money we've raised, but probably thirty, forty thousand dollars over the last handful of years that we've raised for Operation We Care through our July fourth jersey auction, another fundraiser. We have an annual Flock for a Cure event, which is a cancer-based fundraiser that we raised, I think, over the last two years, fourteen thousand dollars that benefits the Brooks Toy Closet at the hospital, the Brook Memorial Fund Relay for Life, and the Title Health Foundation, so they have more money to buy toys. Our Bark in the Park events, on certain Tuesday games, we allow dogs to come to the ballpark. The mission for your dog is bring something we could donate to a local shelter or the Humane Society. Go Purple, that was talked about earlier with the opioids, I know there was a lawsuit or whatever, but the, the benefits from the lawsuit. We've worked with the Tri-County Go Purple groups for the last several years to not only bring awareness, break the stigmatism, but also raise funds for those groups. Strike Out Hunger with Purdue, every Sunday game, you could bring canned food items to get free tickets for a future game. And also, for every pitcher, or for our pitchers, when we strike out opposing batter, Purdue donates five dollars to our local food banks. Collectively, it's over a hundred thousand-plus meals that we generate in monetary and canned donations to our local food banks. We've been active with the Challenger Little League, we made a large donation when that first started, and we remain active on an annual basis. We fill about three to five hundred donation requests a year. So what we may know about those donation requests are, is you, you have a Little League team that's doing a fundraiser, quarter auction, spaghetti dinner, all those things that are going on in the community, I can guarantee you that we get at least one, if not multiple, request from just about every school, Little League, scout group, whatever it may be in the community. We always donate tickets and other merchandise items that we can to raise money for those folks. We're hosting next weekend, or this weekend, excuse me, our Easter event over at Crown. We do bell ringing, Thanksgiving for Thousands. We're involved in Scholar Athletes. We do an event called Float for the Fund. I'd love to have every one of you out there be a celebrity scooper, but basically, we sell unlimited root beer floats for five or six bucks, something like that, and you get to scoop the ice cream and interact with the community, and all the money goes to our fund. So we have a fund at the Community Foundation of Eastern Shore that when we do functions, if it's not directly benefiting something like Operation We Care, that check goes right to them. We put it in our community fund. That way, we're able to go back out in the community and donate funds to different groups as a request. Every Little League group, our, our goal is every Little League group that needs an outfield wall signer, if they need a team sponsored, reach out to us, we'll do that, we'll write that check out of the fund to make sure you got sponsorship. A couple other things, I mean, about the facility, we heard earlier about the Delmarva Chicken Festival coming back at Purdue Stadium. You know, we don't, we're not great at tooting our own horns on certain things, but the facility is used year-round. If you drive by, you'll see Warwick Community College out there with the truck driver training. That has grown exponentially. When I first got here sixteen years ago, it might have been one or two people out there and all that. There's a lot of folks out there learning how to drive trucks. The Police Academy from Warwick, they come over, use the parking lot to not only teach kids, or not kids, the, the folks how to pull over cars, they use the inside of the building on how to clear rooms, do all that. I'm not a police officer, but, you know, they do all those things at the stadium. Bike Week, we host a Delmarva Bike Week. We have a number of youth and adult baseball opportunities on the field. And one of our first events this year, we'll be hosting Delmar and Parkside High School baseball game, just to warm up the facility and kind of have a soft opening. We do a movie night in the fall. We help, we work with Title Health to do the drive-through flu clinic, and obviously, during the pandemic, we're a testing site, a vac site, we're all those kinds of things. So I know it's taken up a lot of your time, but I wanted to kind of review what we do and who we are. As a General Manager, I don't like doing these things to try and toot our own horns. That's what we do, put the book together, at least to have some sort of community recap, but I really enjoy doing these things just to do the right thing and be involved for our fans. As you know, or may know, and you're aware, I think, through the meetings I've watched, in twenty-twenty, Major League Baseball did restructure the minor league system. They eliminated forty teams, down to a hundred, from a hundred and sixty teams to a hundred and twenty teams. We obviously were not one of the teams that were eliminated. The team in Frederick, Maryland, was actually eliminated from the minor league system. Moving forward, we will have some stadium renovations that we're working through. I think it's good news that the state has passed House Bill eight-ninety-seven, and we've worked through that process and actively working with Steve Miller, the Parks and Rec Department, and the MSA on that. And we're very fortunate as a state, not only the Delmarva Shorebirds, but the team in Bowie and the team in Aberdeen, that the administration passed that bill. So, and the first tranche is focused on the minor league teams and getting us up to speed with the new facility requirements that are coming down the pike, or came down the pike for Major League Baseball. And the reality of it, in short, is the, the way Purdue Stadium was built in nineteen ninety-six was based on a standard that was put out in nineteen ninety. Because of a harmonious working relationship, nothing in that standard had basically changed for thirty years. So now it's. So now it's time to kind of modernize stadiums, and, and not so much from a fan identity standpoint, but more from a, more from a player health and wellness standpoint. Simple things, rosters used to be 25 players, now they're 30. Our locker room is built with 28 lockers, you know, and it's not built with expansion room in the locker room. Coaching staffs used to be three, four people, now they're eight, nine people. So, you know, there's been a lot of growth, technology growth, things of that nature that are why these facility standards are being put in place. And it's also the goal of the facility standards to kind of create a, a little more consistency between all levels. So when a player leaves Delmarva and goes to Aberdeen, Bowie, or Norfolk, as they move up the chain, they're having a consistent experience. A lot more emphasis is being put on player health and wellness, and a lot of the improvements kind of geared towards that. So I'll stop. I know you've been here all morning, and I'm glad to answer any questions you may have about myself or the organization or what we got going on moving forward.
Jeff?
Questions? So I guess trying to get clarity as far as the, the tranche of money or what's coming. From my understanding, it was supposed to be what, the stadium authority, you're supposed to get, I don't know, a whole relationship there, you're getting money to improve the facility. Hopefully, that means that you would continue to have the Orioles, you know, be an affiliate, I guess, of them for some time to come. What's the happening, I guess, with those funds, or what are we getting out of that, for clarity? And then, as a attachment to that question, I guess, the museum that is inside the, the current stadium, which has, you know, our history as a county as part of that, is that being a part of the equation to be upgraded also?
So the first part of the question, so there's, so the Shorebirds, or I should say Parks and Rec, when these requirements, the new facility requirements came out, we had a study done by Davis Bowden Friedel to come out and say, okay, here's what you're supposed to have, here's what we have, and at that time, give us some ideas of what things might look like. So with the Maryland Stadium Authority, I believe, and I made sure Steve was here in case I get out of turn here at all, but basically, you know, the county will, has signed an MOU to work with the Maryland Stadium Authority. My belief is, and Steve's back there, you can come and slap me if I'm wrong here, the Maryland Stadium Authority will run point on all of this in conjunction with Parks and Rec and the Shorebirds to get to the finished product. There's not a set amount of money, per se. The next step is that the Stadium Authority, we've provided them with documents they've requested about the facility, where we're at, those types of things. The next step will be is they will then, I believe, hire a firm to design. It's okay, here's where we're at, here's where we need to go, here's what it's going to cost, and then go from there. That's the next step. So hopefully, those things can move forward in a, in a smooth fashion moving forward here, now that the ball is kind of rolling forward, and go from there. The museum, so the-
I don't know if that's the right term for saying the history, I guess.
The Eastern Shore Baseball Hall of Fame Museum, yes, it's obviously across the hall, it's a volunteer group of folks that exists there. The Stadium Authority, the MSA bill is mostly focused on getting the stadium to the requirements that we have to be to continue to exist, basically. So then, the short answer is no, there's nothing defined in there to upgrade the museum or any of that nature.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just looking through this book. When I was coming growing up, we had a different, not the Eastern Shore, but Hall of Fame, minorities in the, playing baseball. How can, and I see you do sponsored Little League, and I know it's expensive, do you require certain minorities to be in the baseball league or Little League? Because most kids, you don't see many African-Americans playing baseball anymore.
So, let me just make sure I'm correct with this question.
I guess based on how to recruit kids to play baseball.
So, yes, getting the kids, particularly minority kids, to play sports is a challenge that all of baseball has, not just-
Yeah, because-
The Shorebirds or our local Little League.
Yeah, of course.
So there's a couple of things that are going on at the major league level that have been going on for a while. There's, there's an art, what's called Major League Baseball's RBI program, which is reviving baseball in inner cities. That's a program that's been going on for a while. In the new structure with Major League Baseball, we have a, a youth and softball committee at the, at the major level that's made up of folks like me and other teams to try to tackle that topic. The one thing, the initiative that we just launched last year, and unfortunately, our event date, is a program called The Nine, which The Nine is a tribute to Jackie Robinson. Jackie Robinson in the minor leagues wore number nine. Everybody's famous for number 42 at the big league level, but when he played for the minor league team for the Dodgers, he actually wore number nine. So we're hosting our Negro League Night on May 28th. We're working with members of the Worcester County NCAA, NAACP, and other folks to bring the history of the Negro Leagues to the ballpark that day on May 28th. We were doing it last year, too, but unfortunately, the game rained out, it was June 12th. So we are, we are actively engaged in that and trying to figure it out. It is a challenge that we have because of variety of reasons.
Because of that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's economic issues, yeah. I mean, it's a lot easier to go pick up a basketball, and you got a local court in your community to go, you know, shoot around versus, yeah, going to a baseball field and trying to find nine other friends, and nine other friends, again, to play 18 people. So it is a problem that Major League Baseball recognizes.
Well, you're, you're trying to do, that's what I want to make sure.
Yep, we're trying to do it, and I think that's where our goal with a lot of our community program is, is reaching a diverse audience. The school reading program, we provide 100 tickets per series to underprivileged groups that may not otherwise be able to afford a game. So we really try to reach everybody in the market, and what we build as a staff every year in our, our programming is how do we reach the, all the different segments in our market, whether that's our Latinx community, our African-American community, whatever it may be, is how do we reach all those folks and get them out to the ballpark, get them to enjoy baseball? It's a, you know, some of it's a, it's a battle. I mean, we're, we're not, we're going to keep working at it, and that's the goal.
Good, thank you.
I can, Shani, the little, all the Little Leagues are looking for players, and they're making it easy. You know, if you're not able to afford it, they're making it easy to get in. And also in this area, you have Pony League, which also is looking for players. They play through the summer and into the fall. So, yeah, you, you don't have to be on a travel team, there's, there's a lot of baseball.
Yeah, just local, but see, that, one of the problems is the playgrounds, they're not open anymore, you know, and a lot of them started in the playgrounds. Lake Street Playground was one of, one of the really first playgrounds in this area. And I have a picture of some guys that played ball, you know, and we played in high school, like Salisbury High was champion playing ball.
Yep.
Now it seems like it's dwindling down.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
Over the years, and hi, even in high school, they're not, you know.
It's unfortunate that travel baseball, as, as mentioned, has, became a focal point versus local Little Leagues. Both my kids went through Delmar Little League, and I'm a big believer in Little League. And, you know, and that's, again, it's a focused effort for all of baseball because we know that, again, the people enjoying our sport aren't fully representative of the people in our markets. And so that's what we really tried to do over the last handful of years before COVID kind of knocked us all sideways, was look at our markets and say, what's our fan base? What's your local baseball population look like? Does that look like your market? The answer is no. So now it's a matter of us trying to figure out how to, how to get that to happen. And we don't have those answers, but we're going to keep trying.
I think, I just wanted to say, I meant to tell you last time, Chris, and I appreciate all that you do. Opening night, 1996, I still have my program, I was there, I still have it, I checked it out the other day, or, you know, it was called the other month, but it's still in prime and perfect condition 27 years later, so that's pretty cool.
All right, well, I've got one as well. I appreciate that.
I'll get it by the store, I'll sell it.
Oh, yeah. We get a lot of stuff, we have a lot of older, older clients that have passed or ill health, and so they'll, you know, they don't know what to do with it. If their kids don't want their stuff, they'll, they'll bring it by, and so we've got some boxes of old stuff. So if anybody needs some old-time stuff, we've got it here at the stadium, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bitters, for your time.
I got one quick thing. Chris, just, not a question, a point. Thank you for everything you and your staff do. Getting through COVID was tough. A lot, lot went on behind the scenes, didn't it?
It did, yeah.
Yeah.
Keeping 15 people employed and not, you know, without income, it's not, not the easiest.
Well, thank you for what you do, thank you for the opportunities that you provide to everybody in our community to have something to do and enjoy family nights out and things like that. That's important, and we thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Any more?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
We have a lease agreement with Federal Express Corporation with Mr. Tony Rudy, Director of Aviation. Mr. Rudy, if you'd like to join us, how you doing?
Good morning. How's everyone this morning?
All right.
Morning. So just a little background with FedEx, they have been on the airport since the late 1980s. We had a developer who leased, basically leased property from the airport since the